Although I do object.
At a third and fourth grade level?
I do object because that first grader asked me if I was Tricia's father.
Oh, no.
Uh huh.
And he said, "No."
I'm not coming anymore.
He said, "No, I'm her grandfather."
Yes, and yes.
That's hilarious.
No, it wasn't.
So that was...
That was either a disservice to me or a very nice compliment to you, I'm not sure which.
So that was a lot of fun, thank you for including us in that.
That was great.
Encourage everybody to participate.
What a well-kept secret, I mean, people should, you know, people should know about that, they'd want to do it. It's really like a minimal amount of time and the kids are absolutely great.
Connie, I don't see any minutes to be approved. Okay, good. So, at this point, I think we'll turn it over to Dan to do the budget hearing.
Go back to the first slide. Well, this is it, this is our last meeting before the referendum, so we're at the home stretch. You can go to the next slide, Connie, please. As this shows, the process started really in October for me and some of the administrators and then officially kicked off when we got, we received the enrollment projections and then diligent work for the last, I don't know, six months or seven months or so. Next slide, please, Connie. Our enrollment is fairly flat over the last five years with a slight decline anticipated for next year and continuing with a trend that this follows a period, probably the previous five-year period of rapid increase. Next slide, please, Connie. From that enrollment, we generate staffing for next year which shows an increase of 2.2 full-time equivalent positions and that's primarily because we're anticipating additional positions for, in the elementary school, for social emotional learning, responding to some state mandates, middle school science as a response to enrollment in the middle school and high school social studies. Actually, middle school science is more program-related and high school social studies is more enrollment-related, while reducing a clerical position due to retirement. Next slide, please, Connie. Calculating our tax levy cap, I've been over this in a few meetings. Our adjusted cap calculates to about 3.43 percent and that's basically a function of our growth factor over the last few years with the assessment rolls. The 2 percent really refers to the inflation rate and then since our assessment rolls have grown, it seems to be culminating in this year with another 2 percent increase in our, our tax base growth factor, which is the assessment roll. And that combined with changes to our debt service and state aid as far as capital improved, past capital improvements go, results in an adjusted cap of about 3.43 percent. Next slide, please, Connie. Our budget change history, as you can see through the decades of the 2000s there, we're fairly high, probably averaging in the eight or nine percent range. On the last 10 years, we've been averaging below 2 percent and we're a little higher than we have been in the past few years and I think that's, some of that is a result of, of cap management, you know. A few years ago, our cap was a quarter of a percent, so this year we have a little more room to grow, so in anticipating the future, we're looking at that and being able to respond if inflation goes down and then in the coming years. Next slide, please, Connie. I mentioned enrollment, this is a combination of the budget and tax levy, which are the green and the blue towards the bottom, and enrollment and CPI, and you can see over the last 10 years, the enrollment and CPI, at least as far as enrollment is concerned, which is the red line, over the, until the last two years, have severely outpaced growth in the, the budget and the tax levy. Now, if you look at it 10 years prior, you'd probably see an inverse, so you'd see the blue and the green lines above the, above the black and the red. But, you know, this is a result of boards over the last 10 years, including this board, you know, taking a long, hard look at budget growth and affordability in the community. Next slide, please, Connie. This is the pie chart which shows what we spend our money on. And as you can see, I shaded, it has a purplish hue here, but on my computer it was blue. The salaries and benefits are all kind of in the same shade and what that illustrates is about 75 percent of our budget, 74.24 percent of this budget is salaries and benefits of staff, which I think is, you know, very telling, we're, we're a labor-heavy institution in terms of delivering educational services to children. You know, we spend only 25 percent of our budget or so on, you know, everything from debt service to supplies and contractual expenses. Next slide, please, Connie. What's driving the difference in this budget compared to the prior year? There's budget additions as far as facilities goes, that's funding for a PA system that we hopefully will have installed through this summer. It's a, it's a safety issue, we need public address coverage and, which will include clocks in every classroom, which is, that actually tell the same time throughout the building, which is something we haven't had. Security, we're looking to put in place a director of security, be that through BOSIs or hiring directly, once the right candidate comes by. Right now, it's budgeted for in the BOSIs line, but we may very well do direct hiring on that. And then the three positions I mentioned before. So those additions count for about a 1.7 percent change in the budget and everything else is pretty much either inflationary growth, you know, it's pretty much attributed to inflation. Next slide, please, Connie. Click it a few times to get them all in there. In calculating the tax levy for 2019-20, based on the budget that we put together, we see that our cap is 3.43 percent, our proposed budget is $49.5 million and we collect about $5.5 million in revenue other than property tax. That's special ed and regular ed tuition and state aid take up the lion's share of that, that dollar amount and also county, county sales tax. So if we just left it there, our tax levy change would be about 3.82 percent of an increase towards the average property owner in Bronxville, but the, the board looks to offset the tax levy for next year in the same amount that we have the last few years, allocating about $500,000 from fund balance, which is, will almost wholly be made up from unspent funds from the current year. We may not quite get there, but we'll get close enough so that it won't really impact our overall financial position to allocate $500,000 towards the, offsetting the tax levy. That brings the tax levy down to a little under $43.5 million. That's a $1.1 million change from the prior year, which is a 2.64 percent increase and when you consider growth in the assessment rolls, the percentage tax rate increase averages about 2.2 percent. And again, this budget is under the cap by over $300,000, about $335,000. Next slide, please, Connie. And as we discussed at the last meeting or two, we've put on an additional proposition, it's related to the referendum approved last March wherein we are working on a $24.8 million construction project. We opened bids for the general contractor almost two months ago, about a month and a half ago, which came in much higher than anticipated. We rebid that, again, they came in much higher than anticipated, so that, that ball will be kicked over to the finance committee, but something we think we can do to help out the, the project and what we want to accomplish is to transfer $1.5 million in surplus from our debt service fund accumulated through bond premiums and FEMA reimbursements beyond what we've anticipated going back almost a decade and allocating that towards this project in support of some of the infrastructure improvements we want to accomplish. And that's where we stand and everybody in Bronxville, I think I'm on this camera, will be getting a pamphlet like this in the next day or two, has all this information and more in it, so please go through it if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call and I have sat down with individual citizens and gone through the budget and I'll be happy to do it with anybody who wants to.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
At this point, I do think we have a session for public comment or participation regarding the budget presentation, so I would open it up to public comment. Does anybody want to comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
The contractual costs, what's in that?
Oh, boy. No, it's, it's a whole plethora of things from, from curriculum consultants to, you know, a lot of, a lot of services, facilities-wise, you know, that'll include electric and, and phone service.
Custodials in there?
What's that?
Custodials in there?
Yeah, actually, that's the largest, is our cleaning service and our security service.
Does the bus, school busing show up there?
That might be broken out separately, but it is a contractual service, you know, there's about $5 million worth of stuff that we pay other people to help us out with.
Any other commentary from the public?
One more question. The $1.5 million, what's, what's that whole total fund? Is that $1.5 million that accumulated over, is there a bigger number?
Yeah, at, at June 30th of last year, it was about $3.3 million. Now, the board is allocating some of that in the current year budget that we're in right now, roughly $500,000 or $600,000, because the board made a commitment to keep debt service flat, to smooth it out for, for the tax levy over the course of the next three or four years until we pay off the Seawing project, which is actually, the last payment is in next year's budget, at which time, you know, we'll have the capacity for the debt service for the new project. But the, the debt service surplus at the end of last year was about $3.3 million, it's being reduced now to about 2.7. Next year is probably another $600,000 or $700,000 will get it down to 2.1 or so and so then allocating a million-five of that towards this, this project would get us in the half-million-dollar range that would still be available for future debt service.
It's, that's unbudgeted, I mean...
Yes.
It's reserved.
That's uncommitted.
Or debts, yeah, and reserve them, okay. Anything else? Okay, great. Dr. Montesano, I think it's up to you.
Well, thank you, I just want to echo John's comments about the read aloud, it was a nice event and the children were really excited to have their guests come into the rooms today and just to thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, I know they helped you quite a bit getting some other community members in today that we haven't had before, so that was, that was very nice. I also want to just congratulate our student athletes on the spring season and coming off a very nice school spirit week of events and the seniors had their final moments, I know, girls lacrosse today and it was a really nice send-off, so I want to wish them well in the upcoming playoffs as well, so good luck to them.
We had some success in the National History Day competition, didn't we?
That's what I understand.
I read that in my hometown Bronxville, I think.
There, there might have been one team that had a few individuals that might be related to a board member that finished second in the state competition and is going to represent us in the National History Day competition as well.
Well, congratulations.
So, congratulations.
Knowing the members of that team, it truly is remarkable.
Well, yeah, it was a nice event for our, for our students and they represented us very, very well.
They worked hard, there were a lot of really good teams.
Yes.
When they reach to the Nationals, we'll expect them to present us, don't forget, that's how this rolls.
I, I, you may suspect that I'll be absent for that particular event.
That's it?
Okay. Okay, Dr. Kelly.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, I have a few resolutions before you for approval this evening. We have three probationary appointments, these are all new hires as a result of retirements, actually, so all budgeted, all anticipated, and that's A through C. We do have another teacher aide resignation, D, as well as an appointment of a new payroll clerk. We've also been working with civil service as discussed with you in executive sessions prior about the creation of a position titled educational television supervisor and we did finally get approval to create that position, so we need then board approval and then we'll come back to you with an appointment hopefully later this month. And then we just asked for a change of effective date for our student videographer, she actually started doing that work earlier, so we want to be able to pay her for that. So, items A through G, please, for your consideration.
Great, can I get a motion to approve items A through G as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Great, any discussion or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against?
Thank you.
Is that it for you? Okay, great.
There's no financial update for the current year budget as there is every May, it's just too soon, we haven't closed out the previous month yet, but we're on track, similar to where we were last month. I have a few financial action items. Let's see, the first one is disposal of some textbooks and educational materials deemed have no residual value, they've been replaced and the, the math teacher in question would really like to get rid of them, so she gets them out of her classroom. And usually when we make a disposal of this type, we see if we can donate them and if we can't, they go in a dumpster to be recycled.
Okay, so is there a motion? There was a motion, there it is, okay. Can I get a motion to approve the termination or destruction of...
I move to destroy the math books.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Thank you.
I think the next financial action item is a resolution to, to put into place a retirement contribution reserve, a resolution for a sub-fund which will serve to help us plan in the future for teacher retirement system contributions. This is a law that was put into pass, put into place with the current pass, the passage of the current budget at the state level and we really want to jump on this because this is probably, along with health insurance, the most volatile thing in our budget every year. Our retirement system contribution responsibility is about $2 million of our budget and in a heartbeat, that could go up to $3 million just because of a number we get from the state. Depending on how their investments do, is a large portion of this and also for those of you who are financially-minded, their discount rate on their assumptions of future returns has a lot to do with it and in the future, they're probably going to be lowering that discount rate, which means we would have to pick up more of it. So I think this is, is a wise thing for the, for the district to put into place and then the finance committee will consider how to fund it and appropriate funding level and all, all of that stuff.
Yeah, so this is principally allows us to buffer volatility in the TRS funding.
Exactly.
Which is great because it's, in a world of a tax cap, you don't have that much room for error, so...
And the TRS is historically volatile, correct, Dan?
Yes.
And current conditions suggest that that volatility may be all the more frequent going forward.
Four or five years ago, this one budget item, which is in the millions of dollars, went up about 45, 40 percent.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So this is, this is protect against historical trends where there are indicia of the need to protect against that, those trends going forward.
Exactly, yeah, so I'm, I'm very much in favor of taking advantage of the new law, so if we can get a motion to approve...
Move.
...the creation of the reserve fund, that'd be great, so we get a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? No, great, the motion passes, thank you. Dan, I think you're still up.
Yep, I think that's it for financial action items. And then we're moving on to facilities items. Our first update on where we are in the current capital plan that was approved in March of last year, Chambers Field is, is finally progressing at a rapid pace. Paving will begin tomorrow in making the 400-meter track. Infill was delivered today, the plan is to start the Christmas tree lot, which is almost finished, just awaiting infill so that it will be available for Karen for, for practices next week while they're finishing up Chambers Field, which hopefully will alleviate a lot of our, you know, well, not a lot, but at least some of our, our crunch for fields. Timing on completion is about, is at least 30-plus days from when the paving goes in because that, how long it takes the pavement to cure before it can be covered by track material, so obviously, they are not going to make it by, by Memorial Day. We're probably looking at mid to late June for completion, but having been out there and walking it just about every single day, it, it's going to be a great facility and we're looking forward to it.
I like the big B in the middle, that's pretty snazzy, Karen. The, there was some, some requests that maybe if we're not going to get this done and have it usable and there were some suggestions, well, couldn't we have bridges over the track? And no, we can't have bridges over the track. But maybe keeping up the fencing that is around the field if they're not going to complete it until mid to late June and keeping the fencing up until your practices for your various programs, fall programs begin, because otherwise, it's going to be just everybody who's not connected to the school will be using the brand spanking new field. So I wanted to run by you and by the board that that prospect had been raised as, could it be possible, just to protect it as the brand shiny new thing that it is, but I don't know.
I think, obviously, we want to make the track available over the summer to the residents because, you know, they've gone without a track.
Yeah.
And it's, that gets a lot of use.
Yeah.
And we certainly can limit it to, you know, no outside groups or anything like that, but if, you know, so we can do that.
Are you, are they concerned about like the groups that play on Sunday morning and is that what...
I think it was just kind of concern, people had concern that they expressed to me and I'm not saying one way or the other whether it's, you know, something we want to do, but could we preserve the field for, from wear and tear for use by the athletic programs for the fall that start in, in mid-August, right? So we're, yeah, we're talking about restricting use for a number of weeks of the field, not the track.
And I just don't know, like, who uses the field on that Sunday morning, there's always gentlemen out there playing, you know, soccer and whatnot and not sure they would...
I have no idea.
...they would tarnish our car too much, our new car.
We have some change orders that were reviewed by the facilities committee that at the end of the report will take care of those in facilities action items. The pumps are installed, the installation is complete, electric hookup comes next week thereafter, they will be tested, we're expecting full functionality by the end of the month, so, you know, we'll be able to move a lot of water. As I mentioned a little earlier, we opened bids again for the Phase Two, which is the, the building renovations in addition. There were no significant improvements to the numbers from the prior bid opening, so between now and the May 21st meeting after the referendum, the facilities committee will be reviewing with the architect and the construction manager those bid results and coming up with a strategy to move forward. And there's a lot of options, but, you know, we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah, we do.
PTA library project, we're looking to award the bid tonight. Completion is expected by the end of the summer, we're relocating by Memorial Day the library to the fireplace room so that our contractor can get a, get started as soon as possible and get a running start, so hopefully we'll be ready to go by certainly the start of school.
Okay.
And then I have, as I mentioned, I have action items. I think the first action item would be a resolution to approve a settlement, which was discussed in the executive session with the board's prior architect, there's no financial terms, it's just really releasing each other of certain obligations and so we're looking to have that settlement approved so that we can award the bid.
It's more of an agreement than a settlement.
Yep.
It's, it's, it's a definition of our relationship with our former architect now and going forward as it relates to the library project.
Got that, Connie?
Yes.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve the, the agreement?
So moved.
Do I get a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Item B is we're, a motion to approve a bid award for the middle school and high school library renovation project.
And that's...
And that's an amount of $790,000 to...
Six thousand. So those are the change orders?
No, it's right here, the, it's a bid...
B.
Yeah, change orders are C.
B, oh, I'm sorry.
We're on B.
Okay, fine, so can we get a motion to approve B?
Motion.
Move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And see you, see you the change orders.
Change orders are mostly discovered conditions and the, the cost to correct an error of leaving a shot put circle out of the original plans and the cost to turn the, the track into a true 400-meter track again, which are offset by savings to, from the original bid because when we uncovered the track, it was in really good shape, the asphalt, and good to go for another 10 years, so we don't have to replace it as we anticipated, which picks up the cost of those other changes, so I would ask...
The net of all this is zero.
Yeah, it, it's actually $11.30.
Okay.
But...
So can we get a motion to approve the series of change orders, one through five, I believe it is?
Move.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is that it?
I think that's it on facilities action items.
Okay, the next one, I believe, is board reports, anything to talk about, I think there was an audit committee meeting today?
There was an audit committee meeting this morning and just really quickly, we had our initial pre-planning meeting with Tim Doyle, who is our advisory partner with Bedino Group. Group, and really focused most of it on just what they were doing, but also the TRS reserve that we talked about today. And next year, we'll have a change in accounting principle that changes what gets consolidated. And so we should look at that because it's probably, just as a communication issue, that we should address. And we also touched back on the New York State Controller Audit that we had had a year ago and went through some of the corrective actions. So it was a good, good meeting, 45 minutes long.
Great. Thank you for those who participated, and I think we have a facilities committee meeting coming up for some-
Yeah, we're scheduling a facilities committee meeting for next week to discuss the latest bid opening and options, which we will then present to the board as a whole.
Okay, so action calendar, we have another meeting in about two weeks to hopefully congratulate everybody who's running for office again and approve the budget.
Yes, would be nice.
At least you knew which one you were running for this time.
There's also, if I could, there's, which I forgot to say earlier, we have our Innovation Night scheduled for May 21st, which is the same night as our budget vote. We'd love for everyone to come out. I think it's going to be an exciting evening for us. It's a lot of terrific workshops going on. We have keynote speaker coming in as well, and we're having a sketch artist who is going to be sketching along with, as the keynote is speaking, which should be kind of exciting for us. So we encourage you all to come out and see what's going on here in the area of innovation.
Thank you.
And maybe vote.
And vote, too.
Early and off of it.
At this point, we welcome any members of the public who have, would like to get up and say anything to go ahead and do so. Anybody? Go ahead. So if you want to, you can do it there, or you can come up to the podium.
Excuse me. I'm not a parent. I'm a babysitter of a number of years here in Rockville for many of the staff children. Now they have moved on, and I'm still here. And the playground is lovely, but there are not enough seats. There are five inches. We are sitting on the ground or standing for two hours. I like to keep the children out in heaven, have some activity. Is there anything you can do to put in a few more benches?
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yes, and there were two lovely tables with benches attached. Thank you, Dr. Wilson, old friend. The benches are gone. And so when I have children that have a birthday, I like to give them a few cupcakes or cookies or something. As I said, my first student is a third-year college student in California from Dr. Sally, Sally Reynolds, you know her? Oh, Sally Holden, sorry. Anyway, no tables. You put the little cupcake on the floor, and if they can get it, all right, before the birds.
When exactly are we handing out these cupcakes? And do you have any with you right now?
No, but I did actually.
Okay. It always helps.
We have another meeting on the 21st, so.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
It's a big problem. I'm an old lady, and I'm tired of saying.
We like to solve problems, especially easy ones. We will address that.
Yeah, we should not create those.
Get this lady a table.
And a bench.
Sorry for my appearance, but this is the babysitting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Or whatever you can do to help us. I counted them again today so that I would not be giving you the wrong number. All right? Thanks again.
Thank you.
I'm Agent Gardens Annie Tucker. I hope many of you may know me.
You shouldn't ask for parking spots.
I'll be looking for some of those cupcakes.
Or a kickball court.
All right? Right outside. This work is ruined.
Okay.
I'm Miss Wilds.
Anybody else have any requests or comments or thoughts? Great. Need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.